Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the North Brunswick Township Board of Education Conference/Regular Public Meeting. Today is Wednesday, November 19th. Could we all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Ali, Mr. Carter.
Here.
Ms. James.
Here.
Ms. Keith.
Here.
Mr. Legori, Dr. Patel, Mr. Singh, Ms. Toth.
Here.
Mr. Wen.
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Law, the public notice of this meeting, which included the time, date, and location, was distributed by 3:00 PM on Tuesday, November 26, 2024, and Wednesday, November 27, 2024, in the following manner. Hosted on the bulletin board, reserved for announcements in the Board Office, 25 Linwood Place, North Brunswick, mailed to the Home News Tribune, Start Ledger, NJ.com, and the Clerk of the Township of North Brunswick, and delivered to the nine duly elected Board Members.
Well, good evening, everyone. It's great to be here at Livingston Park Elementary School. It's good to see some of our students tonight here as well. So, we have a couple of great presentations. I want to thank Mr. Dawson and his team for hosting our meeting here tonight. Thank you for having us. And at this time, I will turn it over to Dr. Zakowski.
Madam President, and good evening, everyone. I want to say hi to everyone here in person, and there are millions of viewers, as we're being broadcasted all over New Jersey and North Brunswick. Would you mind if you went out and ordered, and I did my administrative report, as one of our recipients is en route in transit?
Yes.
As we all know, sometimes traffic can play a little trick with all of us.
Absolutely.
So, I'm going to give my report, and it's humbling, all the great things going on in our district. So, I want to start off by saying thank you to the high school team that organized our Veterans Day Assembly at the high school. It was on November 14th, not because they didn't know the date is November 11th, but November 14th was where we were able to get the most of our alum who served, many of our graduates, community members who are serving, come back and tell their story. It was a wonderful celebration and a coordination of our music students, our administration, and it was not only appropriate, but very humbling to see how many folks came from North Brunswick and continue to serve our great nation. So, kudos to the high school and the team for organizing this wonderful celebration. Speaking of team, I'm here to announce on Saturday, 3:00, at a neutral field, is that Franklin, not because their field's better than ours, it's because it's the neutral state final, Group Four final, final game of the high school soccer season, where North Brunswick is playing the number-two team in the state for the state championship, West Orange. West Orange is ranked number 11th in the nation, but the Raiders, the boys soccer team, has truly, really peaked at the right time because of their persistence, their grit, their teamwork, and their care for each other. It's really obvious during the interviews, as they went on this phenomenal run, all the way to the state championship as the number-nine seed, and they upset every team along the way, that how much they care for each other, how they kind of grew together as a team. So, if you're doing, have some free time on a Saturday, I know most people don't, because they're so busy, but 3:00 at Franklin, here in Somerset County, Franklin High School, the North Brunswick Raiders will be playing West Orange for the state final in the Boys' Championship Soccer Game. Speaking of the boys soccer team, one of our best, I think she's been with us as a power professional, she's at every game, every event, whether it's security, just showing up as a fan, Ms. Rona Hales, in fact, she was at all the soccer games. She's not here tonight, and we're going to honor her future because she's at a dinner, being honored as the power professional educator, what should I say it right, the educator, power professional of the year in Middlesex County. She's being honored as a top aide, as you will, for our students. She works at the high school, and she was selected, Middlesex County's top power professional, we put in her work, and she was selected. So, she's at a dinner, and being honored tonight. So, we're certainly very proud of Rona and the work she does for our schools, our students, and staff, and of course, being our number-one fan. Some of you, if you were looking for dinner at McDonald's down the road, I apologize, because we had a Judd night, and it was mobbed. If you were looking forward to getting a quick dinner and a quick meal and supersizing it, you weren't getting in. So, I want to thank the Judd PTO, what a great fundraiser. Ms. Keita and I stopped by, we were going to treat the Board to some nuggets, we couldn't even get in, so we gave a donation, but just congratulations to all the Judd team members, the teachers we're serving, and the PTO organized a wonderful Judd night. Speaking of Judd, back that Friday, November 14th, the same day as our Veterans Day Assembly, they had a 7:30 AM walk named the Ruby Bridges Walk. Now, if you're a history lover like myself, Ruby Bridges was born 1954 in the South, same year Brown versus Board of Ed, eliminating the despicable Plessy versus Ferguson, separate but equal, way we address civil rights. So, they used to segregate, and 1954 was the year the Supreme Court said, "Separate is not equal, and we are not going to continue this." And Ruby Bridges did a walk with state troopers because she had to take a test to get into, some states still protested against that Supreme Court ruling, and she walked every day with state troopers to excel. You may have, there was a movie made, Oprah Winfrey backed it, in fact, Oprah Winfrey reunited Ruby Bridges, fast-forward, Ruby Bridges, because she was six years old when this all happened, 1960, when she walked. Oprah Winfrey reunited Ruby Bridges, and the one teacher who took her in, why there was protests about this young girl going to school, in an all-white school down south. So, in that vein, Judd did a walk, 7:30 in the morning, sponsored by the Women's Club, North Brunswick Township PD, and the Mobile Family Success Center. So, we're really proud of that work that they continue to do in honor of, something that happened a long time ago, but it still resonates with our folks today. And speaking of resonating, American Education Week, I want to thank all of the families and the schools for recognizing our educators. We had so many great events going on throughout the district, Family Fitness Night with Linwood and ECC, Livingston Park had the Cougar Champs welcoming families in, we had JA and Parsons having parent visits, ECC had hosted Coffee with the Principal, as you know, the principal of ECC doesn't eat any coffee to be souped up in the early morning, but he was. We had the Parents Academy at the middle school, and we had our high school's Tomorrow Teachers Program read to our Judd students, you know, as tomorrow's teachers, as we try to grow our own teachers and give opportunities to this noble profession of education. And a special thank you to our association, MBTEA, they provided cookies throughout the district, including Central Office, which is really a blessing and a curse, because the curse is, I eat them all, and didn't get a chance to share them as much, and so I needed them at least. We do have a special presentation tonight, but I just want to mention it, we're going to honor the Executive Director of Elijah Promise. I can't tell you, and we'll get to that in a few minutes, to honor our Executive Director, Michelle Wilson, but Elijah Promise is located in New Brunswick. They not only distribute, they collect, they have a food pantry, they make hot meals, they're doing culinary work with students. It really was a fortunate blessing that I received a call from our President of the Board, connected me to the Executive Director, and on Friday, the week we were off, so that was the November week that we closed schools, I believe it was the 7th, within a couple moments' notice, a couple days' notice, Elijah Promise went and set up a station for hot meals, worked with their friends at Replenish who provided shelf-stable items, but Elijah Promise distributed 1,248 hot meals, 100 bags of shelf-stable food to more than 90 families. In a moment's notice, and the reason, we're closed, and remember, the benefits were being withheld from the federal government, so they went out, and working with our mayor, council, police department, our wonderful staff at North Brunswick, to get the message out, the word out, that we're here to help. And so, we're so proud of that continuing partnership, and we're going to honor Michelle tonight, well-deserved, recognizing her leadership in Elijah Promise's unbelievable contribution to the communities in this area. I do want to take the time, because we're heading towards Thanksgiving, and some people say, "Give it thanks," that we have a wonderful community here in North Brunswick, and I'm so happy to be back, and I'm so happy I have a chance to wish you another joyous, happy, healthy holiday season. And with that, Madam President, that will conclude my report. Hopefully, we have enough time, buys us time, the traffic, and we'll be able to do our honorees.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Zakowski. Well, at this time, we can move to our first presentation, which is our community recognition of Michelle Wilson, the Executive Director of Elijah's Promise, for her dedication and commitment to helping the community of North Brunswick Township. So, shall we go?
Yes, I think we're going to memorialize this, Michelle, as I talked a little bit about it. So, 100 years from now, when you want to share with your grandchildren, how, what a great leadership in a time of need. You do this work every day, but this was a special time, how you responded with your leadership, you'll be in our permanent minutes forever, so.
Well, thank you for being here, Michelle. I just have a couple of words before we read the proclamation. This month, with the help of Michelle and her incredible team, over 1,200 meals were provided to members of our community here in North Brunswick. That kind of impact doesn't happen by accident, it happens because Elijah's Promise shows up for communities consistently, compassionately, and without hesitation wherever there is a need. For me, the partnership is personal, because I had the privilege of interning with Elijah's Promise back in college, and even then, I was shocked by the way that they approached their mission, with dignity, with empathy, and with a genuine belief that every person deserves nourishment and care. Seeing that same spirit now, all these years later, extended to our North Brunswick Township families, is very meaningful. We, as a Board, on behalf of the Board, really appreciate what you've done, so I will move to reading our resolution. Be it resolved by the Board of Education, Township of North Brunswick, County of Middlesex, and the State of New Jersey, that the said Board of Education recognizes the outstanding efforts of Michelle Wilson, Executive Director at Elijah's Promise, and expresses its sincere appreciation for her dedicated services and contributions to the families of North Brunswick. And whereas, the Board of Education of the Township of North Brunswick extends its warm appreciation and heartfelt thanks to Ms. Wilson and her volunteer staff for their tireless work in providing warm meals to more than 1,200 local residents throughout the Elijah's Promise on Wheels program. And whereas, their continued outreach and collaboration regarding their available services have made a lasting impact by helping families access nutritious meals and ongoing support. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the public recognition and commendation be given to Michelle Wilson for her unwavering dedication and outstanding service to our community. Be it further resolved that the copy of this resolution shall be entered in the official minutes of the Board of Education, and that a copy be presented to Michelle Wilson as a token of the Board's appreciation and gratitude.
Absolutely. I'm going to turn it over to her. Yeah.
Oh, good. Well, first of all, thank you very much. I'm very happy to accept this on behalf of our entire team. To be clear with our team, I am the professional microwaver. So, those 1,200 meals were made by our very talented culinary staff and volunteers, and they were done very quickly, thankfully, thanks to emergency funding from RWJ Barnabas Health, they gave us an impact grant to get out there and make these meals possible. When I got called to, for this award today, and I said, "You really don't need to recognize this, we're doing what we were meant to do and what we do every day." But I wanted to come too and express my sincere gratitude to Dr. Z, because while I was on a call the Monday before Election Day, North Brunswick was identified by the State Office of the New Jersey Food Security Advocate as one of the 20 towns they were most worried about in the state. And when I reached out to Dr. Z, early Tuesday morning on Election Day, when many people were not working, before 6:00 AM, he got right back to me, and he made it seamless and easy as possible for us to do what we wanted to do, and we're incredibly grateful for that partnership, because it wouldn't have happened without that quick response and making it so easy for us to come and do it. And we do have our mobile unit three times a week, or we have it at three stops twice a month in North Brunswick, but not with the schools, and I believe this was the start of a very, the beginning of a relationship of more that we can do with the schools. So, I just want to say thank you on behalf of our entire team and to your leadership here for making it possible for us to expand our work and use food to change lives. So, thank you.
So, we have another presentation before we turn it over to our principal. I see that she's here, and Michelle, you so aptly put it, that you didn't want any credit, and that's true, she said, "Do not," but we know the heroes do this work for the work, not for recognition, that's why we wanted to recognize you. And we have another hero amongst us, who also did some wonderful work, one of our teachers, Ms. Kelsey Strauss, she is here, but I want to introduce what I consider, and I've been around a long time as a superintendent, the best special ed director, supervisor, not only in North Brunswick, we have great ones here, but also, I think, within New Jersey. What a great person to have on our staff, our team, to talk about Kelsey, Ms. Catherine Havens. They certainly didn't want recognition either, but it's worthy if you hear this story.
Thank you, Dr. Zakowski. Good evening. It is my honor to introduce Kelsey Strauss, who is a dedicated and impactful member of the Judd School Community and the Special Education Department for the past two years. Although she is currently on maternity leave after welcoming her second child, her commitment to our students and families continues to shine through her work. From the moment she joined us, it was clear that teaching is not just a career for her, but it is truly her passion, with 11 years of experience across multiple states and diverse school communities, and a steadfast belief in the potential of every child. This year, while on maternity leave, she took her compassion beyond the classroom by creating the Grocery Buddy Program, an initiative designed to support families facing challenges with access to food. Through this program, she has now ensured that over 150 families have received not only groceries, but dignity, support, and a sense of belonging. Her work embodies the heart of North Brunswick and our department, educating the whole child and serving the whole family. We are extremely proud to honor her this evening for her leadership, vision, and unwavering dedication. Congratulations, Kelsey. This initiative is more than a program, it's a lifeline, and it connected our community members with families who may be experiencing food insecurity, giving them support in a way that is personal, dignified, and rooted in kindness. Kelsey created a structure that not only helps meet basic needs, but also reminds our families that they're seen, valued, and supported. So, Kelsey, on behalf of the Board of Education and the entire, entire North Brunswick School Community, thank you. We thank you for your vision, your compassion, and your unwavering commitment to our families, even while welcoming a new chapter in your own home. Your leadership sets standards for all of us, and we're deeply grateful for the difference that you've made. So, I'll, at this point, read our resolution. Be it resolved by the Board of Education, Township of North Brunswick, County of Middlesex, and the State of New Jersey, that the said Board of Education recognizes the outstanding efforts of Kelsey Strauss, first-grade inclusion teacher at Judd Elementary School, expresses its sincere appreciation for her dedicated services and meaningful contributions to the families of North Brunswick. And whereas, the Board of Education of the Township of North Brunswick extends warm appreciation and heartfelt thanks to Ms. Strauss for initiating the compassionate community support program known as Project November Grocery Buddy. And whereas, this project stands as a wonderful reflection of Ms. Strauss's steadfast professional and personal commitment to supporting students and their families with ongoing empathy and kindness. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the public recognition and commendation be given to Kelsey Strauss for her unwavering compassion, selflessness, and outstanding generosity to the North Brunswick Township community. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be entered into the official minutes of the Board of Education, and that a copy be presented to Kelsey Strauss as a token of the Board's appreciation and gratitude.
Thank you again, Michelle and Kelsey, for all your work. And we do have our keynote tonight, here, home field advantage, our principal, Mr. Sid Dawson, here at LP. Mr. Dawson.
Good evening, Dr. Z, Mrs. Keita, members of the Board. I'd like to begin by thanking everyone who came out tonight to learn about Livingston Park, celebrate this awesome school. This is a joy for us, we get to brag about our school tonight, and take you inside Livingston Park, things you may be aware of, things you may not be aware of, but most importantly, to get to you to see how all of the things you talk about as a Board of Education play out in the day-to-day lives of our students and our staff here at LP. When we think about our school, we have broad goals this year. This is an overview of what we're working on this year, increasing our student achievement for all of our kids in every population, improving the culture of our school, so kids have better social relationships with one another, with the adults in the building, getting families more involved in our school program. All of that is the what we're trying to accomplish. Why? Because we want this school to be the best school in New Jersey. We want this school to be a school that families are proud of, we want this school to be a school that kids can look back upon in 25, 30 years and say, "Yeah, that was awesome when we were in elementary school." Do you remember when we did that? Remember when we learned that? Remember when I had that amazing teacher? That's the why. Tonight, we're going to talk about the how. How do we make that happen? How do we make this the best possible school experience for our kids? We're going to start with a little theory, and then we're going to go into practice. Okay? So, theory first. We're going to talk about a researcher named John Hattie, who's a pretty well-known educational researcher. He's got a famous book, it's called Visible Learning. And what Hattie did is he measured the impact of all of these different things schools try to improve themselves, and he found correlations with what results in the greatest amount of advancements in achievement. These are the variables on the right. His work is called Visible Learning, and it's something that informs our planning, our decision-making here at Livingston Park. And I want you to think about these variables as you listen to our presentation tonight. You'll hear us talking a lot about collective efficacy. Collective efficacy, in a layman's sense, means the general feeling among the staff and the kids in the school about, does their work make a difference? Is there value in their work? Can they see the results of their labor? And what is the collective mood of the school? Response intervention, data traction. Response intervention, data tracking. In layman's terms, what that means is how are kids responding when we try different strategies with them? If we try something different, is it creating the results we want to see with kids, whether that's academically, socially, in many different respects? What are the expectations that we have for our students? Do the kids know what those expectations are? Are we challenging them? Are we pushing them? And how do we, as educators, give them feedback that's meaningful to them? How do we get kids to take ownership of their learning, take pride in their learning? Metacognition. Metacognition is how you think about your own thinking. If you do well on something, what do you attribute that to? What does the self-talk in your mind look like? What are the messages you tell yourself? If you struggle with something, what are you saying to yourself about how you will improve in that particular area? And of course, families. It takes a village to raise kids and at the elementary level, we rely on so many of our families to support our work. You see many wonderful families here tonight, the best of the best. We're going to talk about what all of those variables look like on a day-to-day basis here at LP. Our school theme this year is "Better Together" because it does take a village. We all work together. We work with our colleagues at central office. We work with our staff here. We work with families at home and all of us contribute to the success of our school. So what we're doing this year is a little bit different. Every single child in our school from preschool through 4th grade has worked with their teachers to create personalized goals, goals to achieve at greater levels in language arts, in math, how to grow their social skills, and how to have better attendance at school. As a school, it's our job then to create opportunities to give the kids feedback on those goals and to involve families in supporting the goal acquisition at home. So we're going to walk through tonight what that looks like. And we'll talk about each area, language arts, we'll talk about math, we'll talk about the climate of the school, and you are going to hear from some awesome, awesome, awesome kids about what this looks like for them. So let's start with what you might see if you walk around the school. Make learning visible. If you walk around the school, you will see student goals in every hallway. Third grade goal might be to get better at division, multiplication. A social goal might be to earn a lot of possum tickets. We're going to talk about what those are later. My guy Jayden's going to explain it all to us. We might talk about reading chapter books with an adult. We might talk about standing up for your friends, being an upstander, reading more every night, measuring your reading with a timer, learning multiplication by practicing. Again, think about that sense of collective efficacy. If you walk in our halls, if you're a teacher, if you are a student, you will see that you are surrounded by people who are determined to succeed, people who are going to cheer you on as you reach these goals. In language arts, we have a wonderful new curriculum. It's called Benchmark. Here's what I love about it. It is rigorous. It is hard. Our kids are learning at a greater level and they are meeting the challenge. One thing that's great about Benchmark is it is a spiraling curriculum. So what that means is thematically, content-wise, kids will revisit the same skills as they progress from kindergarten all the way up through 4th grade. And let me share with you why that's important. As people, we learn when we can make a connection in our mind with knowledge we already have. So if you're a second grader and maybe your family doesn't have the income to say, "Take you to the zoo," that's okay because you've already learned background knowledge about animals in kindergarten and in 1st grade. And what you do in 2nd grade is going to build upon that knowledge. It's high rigor, high demand, and our kids are responding to it. In the lower grades, in kindergarten, 1st grade, 2nd grade, the big emphasis is on phonics. And we'll take a look at what that looks like. Even in preschool, I was in a preschool room today, there's a wonderful phonics component that is setting our learners up for success. There are whole group and small group activities and we're getting positive results. This is our first year of implementing Benchmark in kindergarten, 1st grade, and 2nd grade. From the moment kids are starting, the rigor is there. The heavy phonics component is there. A Benchmark lesson can last almost two hours. So think about yourself as a teacher. Your goal as a teacher is to maintain the engagement of your kids. Two hours is a long time when you're six years old. And modern kids today, they live in the world of tablets, YouTube, TikToks, where things last 30 seconds. So the teachers have to use a multisensory strategy to keep everything engaged. Let's take a look at what phonics looks like. This is Ms. Toboda's class in 1st grade. I want you to take a note of the engagements of the kids, how they're focused on their learning. Some of those letters have asterisks, you know? Couple different sounds. But did you notice how all the kids are moving? They're engaged. Their eyes are in front of them. They're not distracted. That's really good teaching. And that phonics foundation is going to set them up to be great readers as they progress through their work. In Benchmark, you have a whole group component. That's when the kids are getting exposed to grade-level standards, what the expectations are for a student of their age. On the left, you see Mrs. Blair. Take a note of how the kids are sitting. This is more than just the teacher in the front of the room. This is a teacher who's teaching kids how to have an academic conversation with one another, how to maintain eye contact, how to respond to a partner, how to build upon what the person next to them is saying. On the right, you see Ms. Nigro's kindergarten class. Lots of visual supports, lots of aids, diagrams, things that kids can reference as they apply their particular skills. There's a small group component to Benchmark. On the right, you see Ms. Muller, one of our 4th grade teachers. On the left, you see Mrs. Racus, one of our ESL teachers. In the small group setting, a teacher can dial in his or her work to exactly where the kids are, what the skills are that they need focus on, give them feedback that's personalized about their individual goals. A goal without a plan is just a dream. Feedback is the key and our teachers are doing such an exceptional job with this. Ms. Muller, Mrs. Blair are teachers who are setting the standard for what Benchmark looks like, so much so that when new districts inquire with the Benchmark company about, "Is there some place we can go watch and see what this looks like?" Do you know where they go? They go to Livingston Park. And we host other districts, they come to Ms. Muller's room, they come to Mrs. Blair's room, and they check it out because even Benchmark considers them the standard for excellence in what the delivery of this program looks like. In 4th grade, we're taking it to a new level. Our kids are learning metacognition. It's part of their daily routine. One of their 4th grade teachers, Mrs. De Silva, has designed data folders for the kids. I left some on the table for you, but I want you to see what the kids are doing to track their own progress of their goals. Every single week, kids are looking at their math fluency, their reading fluency, their color coding, their attendance, they're tracking their results on the MAP test, and they're taking ownership of those goals. Here's Ayush. He's going to explain how it works.
Hi, my name is Ayusha. I'm in 4th grade at Livingston Park School. This year, my teacher is using something called a data folder. This is it. This data folder tracks our progress in many different ways. It tracks our reading fluency, math fluency, and map scores. He made goals to help us. Some of the goals I created were multiplication, fact fluency, and keeping up with perfect attendance. This data tracker is important because it helps us reach our goals and tells us how we're doing. I like this data tracker because I can always push myself to do better and it teaches me that there's always room to go. Thank you.
What's going to help our kids reach the goal? It's a plan. It's small steps every day over time. We can make really ambitious goals without a plan to get there, without support from our families, from our teachers, it just remains a dream. It just remains an idea. Our kids are tracking their own thinking, their own progress on a daily basis to be successful. We measure that success with a group of people and we start with their families. So what does family engagement look like in literacy? One of the biggest variables in how a child succeeds in literacy is simply reading with a parent. So we have many opportunities where families simply come into school and they read with their kids. They share their favorite books with one another. They practice their reading fluency, which in other ways is saying, "Do you read with expression or do you read each word individually?" Do you understand that when there's a question mark, your voice has to have a little bit of curiosity to it? Or if there's an exclamation point, you get excited! Those are very logical skills that parents can support us with at home. So we bring them into the school and we read together. It might look like our dual-language students in 1st grade presenting their work to their parents. Many, many years ago, more years than I care to admit, Mr. De Lucia taught me something really simple, which is that if a child can teach you the lesson, it means they've really learned it. So in this sense, we invite kids to teach their parents what they have learned in English, in Spanish, so they can master their own learning. Something as simple as having a parent be a guest reader, like Mrs. Grant in 3rd grade, sends a message to a child that reading is important. An adult that you care about thinks reading is so important, she'll come and share that with your whole class. We measure our progress with our ELA data team. These are our ELA data teachers and in the center is our ELA coach, Mrs. Barter, who has been absolutely critical in helping Benchmark be so successful. So these young ladies design Tier 2 and Tier 3 support for kids who need a little extra help. They design school-wide reading events like Read Across America where the entire school celebrates literacy and reading. And even better, we have Mrs. Iyer. Shout out to Mrs. Iyer in the back. Our SOAR program is a special program for kids who are demonstrating success. And SOAR is so successful in North Brunswick that we are now considered one of the districts that is the best at gifted and talented education in the county. SOAR kids are all of our kids. They're multilingual kids, they're kids who have learning disabilities, they're kindergartners, they're 1st graders, they're 3rd graders, they're 4th graders. We currently have over 67 SOAR kids in our school. And for all the kids in the room, I'm going to do it for you. Six, seven! So, we have one of our SOAR students here tonight. I'd like you to meet a very special student. Her name is Abby. Abby, come on up. Tell us about what you're doing in SOAR.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Abigail. I'm a 4th grader here at Livingston Park. I'm also involved in a project-based learning program called Rock by Rock. My mission for this project is to research and learn how we can protect ourselves and others by reducing the impact of natural disasters. I've chosen the research heat waves. I'm working on an interactive project where my audience will create picture-based safety instructions on how to stay safe during a heat wave. I read that New Jersey has been impacted by several record-breaking heat waves over the years. I also participated in a Zoom session with Jennifer Walton, a storm chaser, and found the organization Girls Who Chase. I learned many safety tips during this session. What I really enjoy about project-based learning in the SOAR tribals group is that while working on a project, I get to read, research, and learn so many interesting facts. And when I share my project with others, it feels great knowing they get to learn those facts too.
We love Abby. She's awesome. Same thing applies in math. Kids are doing amazing things in math at Livingston Park. The goals are ambitious, the teachers are phenomenal, they're designing instruction that challenges kids in so many ways. Here you have got a kindergarten student in Ms. Paez's class. You'll notice the materials there are materials kids can manipulate with their hands. We call them manipulatives. At the kindergarten 1st grade level, you see kids like Sunil, shout out to Sunil, working with their hands to make models of mathematical concepts. Those hands-on activities are so important to engage kids. Kids won't learn just because adults are talking to them. They need to see things, they need to touch things, they need to explore, and that maintains high levels of engagement. Collective efficacy is also on display here. So for example, a kindergarten goal is to learn to count to 100. So a simple thing that we've done, very effective, is each time a child masters counting to 100, we take their picture, we put it on the bulletin board. That way, everybody sees them achieving that goal. This is Mackay. He did it real early last year. He's a bright guy. The teachers are responsive to that. So for the kindergarten kids, for 1st grade kids, we need to give them some choices in their goals. So for example, on the left, you see some examples of our math goals for kindergarten kids, for 1st grade kids. Top row, you see things like adding and subtracting within 10. Those are grade-level standards for our 1st grader. But below that, you'll see things they can ask their family to do, things we can talk with their family that they can achieve, like practicing addition and subtraction in the car, practicing with flashcards, singing and clapping as you learn those particular skills. The classroom walls are so important. This is Ms. Torado's class in 2nd grade. These are called anchor charts. These are resources that the teachers design to help the kids apply different strategies to master the skill. Clear visuals, English and Spanish, help our kids learn. And again, the goal is having kids take ownership of their learning. In 3rd grade, we're taking it to the next level. Mrs. Del Barello's in the house. Mrs. Del Barello is doing things really cool here. She is one of the pivotal people in designing math instruction in 3rd grade. Again, let's go back to Mr. De Lucia. If a child can teach us the skill, it means they've mastered the skill. So what we're doing is we're asking families to come in so the children can teach the parents the skill. Why? Because the way that you and I, as adults in the room, the way we learned math is very different than the way kids learn math. than the way kids learn math today. So I've invited the big guns to tell you about this. There are two New York Knicks fans in the school. One is Mrs. Singh. One is John Conroy. And John Conroy is about to tell us about multiplication strategies and how he has benefited from this. So John, come on up. Tell us about it.
Hello and good evening. Good evening, everybody. My name is John, and I would like to thank Mr. Del Barello and Livingston Park Elementary for this opportunity. Our class has been working hard, learning different multiplication strategies. And now it's our turn to become the teachers. Mr. Del Barello invited parents to visit our classroom as we share and demonstrate what we've learned. This will help parents learn the same strategies we use in school so we can practice and work on them together at home. It's a wonderful way to see our learning in action and celebrate our progress.
So this is what it looks like. We don't need to do big, special events to have parents come in. They come in on a daily basis. So in this example, there's several parents learning four different multiplication strategies they can practice at home with their child. What do you get at the end of that? You get a family that can support a child in acquiring their goals and understand the ways that teachers are teaching math these days. Mrs. Alvarez, in the back of the room, has pioneered another thing that we're really proud of in math. It's called the Thinking Classroom. And it's a really cool, interactive technique that our kids are doing. It really engages them in really rich, student-led academic dialogue about how each child is solving problems. And when you watch this lesson, it is magical. Every single child is engaged. They're talking about math. They're thinking deeply. They're thinking critically. And it is absolutely inspiring to watch. And it is spreading throughout all of our grade levels. And we've invited another really talented student to talk about it tonight. So Samaya, come on up. Tell us how the Thinking Classroom works.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Samaya Patel-Bhakta. I am excited to share the group expectations for a Thinking Classroom and the rubric that the classes 4-1 and 4-2 created together. For our group expectations, we use playing cards to be placed in random groups with students of three. We learn from our mistakes. We don't erase our work. We build upon our first problem and use that as a guide for our other problems. We stand when we work in our Thinking Classrooms. We can write only someone else's thinking, not our own. Everyone must understand the work so that anyone in the group can explain it. Groups may look around the room for ideas, but must stay with their own group. I also want to share and explain the rubric that my classmates and I created for our Thinking Classroom. The rubric is posted at each Thinking Classroom station so we can refer to it while we work. Students in both classes, 4-1 and 4-2, built this rubric together so we could decide what good teamwork and problem-solving look like. It helps us stay focused, work better in our group, be open to others' ideas, encourage and support our peers, and try to make effective stages. Creating it ourselves has helped us understand our goals and take more ownership of our learning. Thank you for listening and for giving me the chance to share our Thinking Classroom with you.
Let's take a moment and think about how cool this is. The kids are designing their own rubric. So the kids are determining what success looks like. If you want a student to really internalize your expectations as a teacher, this is a great way to do it. Otherwise, a rubric just becomes a piece of paper in their notebook. But if the kids are responsible for outlining all of the characteristics of success, they can work better together. They can pull out the very best of their colleagues, of their fellow students. They own the learning expectations. The math team is supported by ASTs, just like in Language Arts. They help kids who may need extra support. And our math coach, Mrs. Pizzuli, is delightful. She is exceptional at building relationships with teachers and getting them to try new things, like the Thinking Classroom, cheering them on along the way. This team is tremendous. So we've talked about math. We've talked about Language Arts. Let's talk about the school climate. Shout out to Ms. Pryor, who's in the back, and to Mrs. Maury. We have another counselor who works in our school and in Judd as well. Her name is Ms. Izzy. And they do a wonderful job helping kids learn how to be successful socially. They do classroom lessons. They do small group lessons. And they also look at our school climate data to determine where we can improve. Every year, we survey our kids and our families about the climate of the school, and that data gives our work focus. We're focusing this year on helping kids have better relationships with one another. Every child in our school also has a social goal. This is what some of them look like. Recognizing your own feelings. Using strategies to calm yourself down if you're upset. I could probably use some of those. Working well with others. And what does that look like? Listening, waiting your turn, using respectful words, taking deep breaths, using iMessages. All of these skills are age-appropriate, developmentally appropriate, but they're also things families can practice at home. Whether you're playing a game with your child or you're helping your child manage their emotions or determine what the best way is to respond. We do work to support this in a variety of ways. One thing that's cool about LP is we do something called Family Circles. A Family Circle is a mid-level group of kids, ranges from preschool all the way up to fourth grade. And we meet a few times a year. They have a Family Circles teacher who stays with them from preschool all the way up through fourth grade. So this is Ms. Vogel's group. Ms. Vogel's one of our awesome pre-K teachers. So you'll see Dylan on the left, who's in kindergarten. He'll be with Ms. Vogel in the Family Circle every year through fourth grade. So this year, the Family Circle kids will give each other feedback on their social goals. If you're a fourth-grade child like Emily, maybe you give feedback to Dylan about how to be successful when you're playing with your friends, how to wait your turn, what to do if you feel upset about someone cutting in the lunch line. How do you manage those emotions? It also helps kids develop relationships with people throughout the building. So it's not just your teacher that you know or the kids in your classroom that you know. You can say hi to the kids you know from your Family Circle, from your Family Circle teacher. And each classroom, there are systems in place to recognize kids making positive social choices. For example, in the right, you see a fourth-grade classroom. They have these little jars, these little glasses on their desk. And every time the kids are making good choices, the teacher's giving them a plastic straw. Again, think about that visual, collective efficacy. Kids seeing each other be successful for the right reasons. In other classrooms, it's a classroom economy where the teacher might have dollars they hand out, and the kids can choose different rewards. You'll notice, unfortunately, inflation has come to Livingston Park. Some rewards are now a little bit more expensive. It's a rough economy, folks, you know? That's where we are. We also do things school-wide. So under Mrs. Van Langen's leadership, we are a PBS school. What that means is we actively teach kids our school values. What are our school values? We're peaceful. We're respectful. We include others. We're determined. We don't give up when work is hard. And we give our very best work every day. We show excellence. We call it cougar pride. So how this works is we actively teach kids what cougar pride looks like in different parts of the school. What does it mean to have cougar pride on the school bus? What does it mean to have cougar pride in the cafeteria? What does it mean to have cougar pride in the hallway? We actively teach the kids what that behavior should look like. And when they show us those behaviors, we give them something called a possum ticket. And the possum ticket is the teacher's way of giving feedback specifically to that child, saying, hey, I see you doing the right thing. I see you making a good choice. I see you not giving up on that assignment. And every Friday, what happens is we pick one winner in each class. They come on down, right here. It's a big event, Friday, 2:15, come on by. And they put their tickets in the posometer. The posometer stays up here because we need everybody to see kids making good choices. And the one winner in each class, they get a prize every week. PBS for the kids, if you ask them, they would say, yeah, I can win a prize. What it's really about is sending the message to kids of, hey, there are adults here who see you doing the right thing. They care about you, and they recognize you for doing the right thing. It's not about the trinket. It's not about the bracelet or the bouncy ball you might win. It's about knowing that you are loved and cared for in the school you come to every particular day. Now, when we reach school-wide goals, we do really special things. So for example, last year, we had a student-faculty basketball game for our third graders. They were our top earners for the particular time period. It was a close game. Kids won. We may have a shot this year. They lost their best player to free agency. We'll see. We even brought in a miniature golf course to our school, and that was a school-wide reward, where the kids could play rounds of miniature golf because we reached over fifty thousand possum tickets last year. It's only November, we're already at twelve thousand six hundred tickets. The kids here at Livingston Park, they make good choices, and we recognize them for it. But there is a special group of kids that I want you to know about. A very special group. Many of the kids here have been in this group a couple times. And I've brought in one of our very, very distinguished people to tell us about it. One thing that we do that's really special is every January, Ms. Pryor recognizes kids for peacefulness, the Peacemaker Award. Again, a big display, collective efficacy, of kids doing the right thing and sending the message to everyone in our school community, yes, you can be successful. You'll see it every single Friday when we recognize kids to be the student of the week. And a few times a year, we do something really special. And here to tell us about what that is is my guy, Jayden. Jayden, come on down. Now, I had to ask Jayden and his sister Hazel to come tell us about what it means to be a cougar champ, because this is something really special. And Jayden has won multiple times, to no one's surprise, because he and Hazel are both wonderful models of what this looks like. So Jayden, tell us about what it means to be a cougar champ.
Being a cougar champ means showing kindness, respect, and doing our best every day, not just our in-class, but everywhere in our school. A cougar champ is someone who is peaceful, respectful, inclusive, determined, and excellent. That means we help others, work hard, and always try to do the right thing, even when it's not easy. To me, being a cougar champ means being a leader, not the loudest person, but someone who listens, helps, and keeps a positive attitude. I want to say thank you to my teachers for helping me learn, my classmates for being awesome, and my family for cheering me on. And thank you to the Board of Education for making our school such a great place to grow and shine. Thank you.
So what happens? What happens when you've got really great teachers with a rigorous curriculum, with differentiated instruction? What happens when kids have goals and big expectations? What happens when the school climate is supportive of kids and recognizes them, cares for them? We get good results. I always like to look at our fourth graders as a barometer for how I'm doing as a principal, how we're doing as a school. These are our fourth-grade NJSLA results. You'll notice the kids who are in the "did not meet or partially met" category are going down in both math and language arts. Look where they're going up. We have a six-point gain in math for kids who met or exceeded expectations, a seventeen-point gain in ELA. That's the result of teachers working really hard. That's the result of kids working really hard. It's the result of families supporting their education. And we are so proud of them. We dive into this data a lot deeper. We look at all different groups of kids. Boys, girls, kids with disabilities, kids who are learning English. And that is a group of kids that's near and dear to my heart, that I always pay a lot of attention to. So I want to give you a few anonymous examples and show you how a child progresses through time at Livingston Park. So these are three students. We'll call them Students A, Student B, Student C. Student A is a multilingual learner. As you know from Mrs. Chang, multilingual kids also take a test called the ACCESS test. Student A came to us in second grade in 2023. ACCESS is a score, where the highest score you can earn is a six. You exit ESL services at 4.5. He was in our dual-language program. When he first came, first year, 2.2. Second year, 4.0. Third year, 6.0. Top of your head, how many years do you think it takes to learn another language fluently? Any guesses? For most people, it takes six years to really master a second language. We have dual-language kids doing it in two. Awesome. I actually ran into this young man. I had a meeting at Linwood a couple days ago. I was so excited to see this student. And I asked him, how's it going at Linwood? How's fifth grade going? And I expected him to say, wow, you know, the English is really hard. His biggest concern was, I've got to manage seven teachers now. How do I do this? I went from one to seven. Take a look at NJSLA. Third grade, he had a 737. Fourth grade, 759. That's above the school average. Look at English. Went from a 747 to a 762. Student B is also a multilingual student. Student B was with us in kindergarten. By second grade, he tested out of ESL. Look at these math and ELA results. Third grade, he was at 762. Kept growing. 771 in fourth grade. Look at English. Third grade, he was at 733. Fourth grade, 762. We oftentimes, we get a stereotype in our mind of, if a child is a multilingual student, they're going to struggle. Not at Livingston Park. They're going to be challenged. They're going to be supported. They are going to be cherished by bilingual teachers, dual-language teachers, ESL teachers, who are going to push them really hard. I think about our students who are classified. Here's an example. Student C, third grade, math score was a 712. Fourth grade, 749. That's a thirty-seven-point gain in one year. ELA went from a 688 to a 725. Kids are growing here tremendously because they have exceptional, caring teachers who are supporting them. I think about our dual-language kids. We started dual-language a number of years ago because this famous study by Collier and Thomas shows us, of all the different ways we can teach multilingual kids, dual-language will get the best results. I asked one of our fourth graders and her dad, Dr. Sontag, to tell us a little bit about what their experience in the program has been like.
How the dual-language program has benefited me is...
How the dual-language program has benefited me is I get to have friends from different Hispanic backgrounds. El programa de dual-language me ayudó porque puedo tener amigos de muchos países hispanos. I'm able to understand when my friends are sad, mad, or another feeling. I can understand what happens because I ask them in Spanish. Puedo entender cuando mis amigos se sienten mal. Puedo entendernos porque puedo preguntar al español. I love my friend.
We have really enjoyed the dual-language program at Livingston Park because it has helped our daughter maintain and encourage her pride in her Mexican culture that we teach her.
So, LP, you may not know this, maybe you do. We have the largest multilingual population in the district. 21% of our kids are multilingual learners. And that community is a powerful community for us. Every February, we celebrate them. We have a breakfast for our multilingual families. Of our 108 families, we had about 95 come to our school breakfast last year. Think about that, 95 families. We had so many kids here, it was amazing. It was Mrs. Husnain and Ms. Kemperman and Mrs. Racus working hard to make all of these families feel comfortable and welcomed in our school. They are a wonderful source of support for us. And because it's such a big part of our school population, we really care about how those families, how those kids are doing. So, at the end of the day, when that day comes in June and it's time to say goodbye to our fourth graders, I can't help but feel a little bittersweet at those days. I look at all these smiling faces. I look at 100 kids, 100 families who are happy. And I see a lot more than successful fourth graders. I see preschool kids who ran out of the car to give Mrs. Bisignano a hug in the morning because they were so excited to see her. I see Ms. Nigro going to their birthday parties, each and every one of the kids. I see these kids cheering on Ms. Torres because she was the teacher of the year. I see their families liking Mrs. Droz's posts on Parent Square because they are the most creative and colorful posts in the entire district. I see Ms. Palermo giving them a pep talk before they gave their speech in student council. I see Ms. De Silva making them laugh because she uses silly sounds and voices in her lessons. I see Mrs. Beg, our preschool paraprofessional, sneaking little origami toys into their bookbag because she knows they don't have toys at home. I see Mrs. Reynolds inviting them to the Somerset Patriots because they're the most improved reader in their class. I see Mrs. Pakovic dressing up in the Cougar Champ outfit to give them a hand at the Cougar Champ ceremony. I remember the moment before the concert where Ms. Fackelman gave them a pep talk and helped them find their voice in song. I see Mrs. Husnain with 108 goodie bags all over her living room getting ready for the ESL breakfast. I see Mrs. Mills singing songs to them in the hallway so they remember the rules. I see all of these kids. I also see the teacher who didn't sleep the night before because their family just had a parent who was taken by ICE. I see the child who comes to school hungry and the teacher gives them an extra snack. I see the family who needs extra love and support and is embraced by this community. I see the work of really special adults. I see the work of Mr. Anderson, who's here tonight. Mr. Anderson is one of the most reliable and exceptional substitutes we have in this district. Mr. Anderson is a retired veteran. He's a former corrections officer. He's a former police officer. So, I said, "You know where you'd be good? Kindergarten." And let me tell you, he is such a special man. He is the most kind, gentle, loving man. He gets here, he almost beats me to school every day. Usually, it's Mrs. Blair and Mrs. Alvarez who race me in in the morning. But Mr. Anderson's not far behind. But it's something special when you can walk into a kindergarten class and watch the kids swarm Mr. Anderson because they love him. And he makes their day every single day. I may or may not have told him he's not allowed to substitute in any other schools, which I think the board would agree is an appropriate policy. I see Mrs. Viano. I see people who started with us as parents, became paraprofessionals, and decided, "This is the place I want to be a teacher. This is the community I want to support." I see teachers like Mrs. Saber, who basically taught herself Spanish to reach our multilingual kids in her work, her dedication. When I look at those kids graduating, I see the work of exceptional leaders like Mrs. Van Langen, Mrs. Maury. If you walk past Mrs. Van Langen's office, I want you to notice all the pictures she's taken of our school. The pride that she has in what our teachers are doing, what our kids are doing, radiates in her interactions. We are in a relationship business. And the way she has built relationships with our kids and our teachers has been inspiring. I see Mrs. Maury, who, God love her, can handle just about any situation. She is always calm, she's cool, she's collected, she's rational. And that's just when she deals with me. She's even better with the kids. She is a powerful role model for our young girls. She helps kids learn academically. She is a tremendous teacher and even better administrator. I look at our teachers and I see leaders. I see people who are going to be the next leaders of our district in the years to come. LP is a school where people come to learn. Kids return when they graduate. We've got a lot of North Brunswick kids here who are now North Brunswick teachers. I see people who become paraprofessionals. Paraprofessionals who become teachers. Teachers who become grade-level leaders. I see deans who become directors. I see directors who become principals. We cultivate our leaders here. So, when I see our school and I see those 100 kids graduate every June, I see the collective actions of people working better together. Teachers staying up late. Board members agonizing over what is the right decision for us. I see parents coming to school events. I see kids earning possum tickets. I see everybody working together, determined to achieve their goals. And I know that we will because when we work together, we do better. I see parents like Mrs. Miranda, who I have to point out because she is exceptional. Every single time we have a school event, she is here and she usually brings food, which I appreciate, you may have noticed. I hope Mayor Womack isn't watching because if she ran for mayor, she might just win. She knows everybody in the school. And if I found that if I need to find a resource for our parents, if I need to identify where to go in the community to help someone, I can talk to Jessie. So, gracias por siempre apoyar nuestra escuela. Te apreciamos. I see parents coming to support their kids in our school. We have the best parents in the district. I see families coming to events. I see families reading with kids. I see families celebrating art, music, computers, robotic skills. In the end, when you think about Livingston Park, we are better together. We're better because of the people in this community. We're better because of this board. We're better because of these teachers. And most importantly, we're better because we get to serve all these kids. So, thank you for listening to me rant about Livingston Park for however long this has been. And we appreciate the opportunity to tell you about our school.
On behalf of the board, Mr. Dawson, the exceptional staff, I think point well-taken. You are better together. And we thank you for articulating such a wonderful message, giving us a great insight that we couldn't read in the many reports that filled out. We couldn't see it in just a video. We had to experience it. And certainly, thank you for allowing us to experience the magic of LP. And thank all of you for coming, staff members, long days. You came here just to hear about the things you live every day. So, on behalf of the board again and from all our parents, thank you for allowing us to have your most cherished treasure and continue to work together because together, we're better. So, thank you, Mr. Dawson. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Dawson. In my time on the board, we've seen many of these presentations at conference meetings. And I have to say, by far, this was one of the best that I've seen in my five and a half years of being on the board. So, thank you for what you do. This was such a great picture for all of us to see what makes your school go around every day. You have great staff, great administrators, and your students are even better. And I see some future public speakers that may take over for us one day up here. So, maybe. So, thank you all so much. What a great school. And I definitely might have to take you up on the offer to put it out there to come for one of those math lessons because I would personally love that myself. So, thank you. We have a couple of items of business to get to this evening. So, we will move to our meeting minutes. Mr. Carter, would you please take item six?
Yes, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion to approve the following board minutes. Regular public meeting minutes, October 29, 2025. Executive meeting minutes, October 29, 2025.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is anyone opposed? All the minutes are accepted.
Thank you. Do we have any communications this evening, Dr. Zakowski?
No, Madam President.
Okay, thank you. We'll move to our reports, item eight. Assuming we have no old or new business because you went into your administrative report, we can move to our student reports.
Hey, report.
Good evening.
Good evening, thank you. Tonight is a lot shorter than usual.
Okay.
It's good. Last weekend, on November 14th and 15th, the Alchemist Theater Company performed their fall play. This year was Almost Main. Everyone involved did an amazing job in making the play come to life. And this year, the show was absolutely spectacular as usual, and it had great attendance. The Key Club and Power Club sponsored a food drive this past couple of weeks. With their help, Thanksgiving meals will be given to families in our Raider Home Plate program. And all the rest of the food will be given to North Brunswick Food Bank. This food drive was incredibly successful. And I was in the SGO office the other day. And we have like a couple dining table-sized tables in there. And every table was like filled with like stacks of like cans and things like touching like almost the ceiling.
Wow.
It was insane to see. And it's just nice seeing our school support community around us.
Excellent.
SGO sponsored our fall blood drive Tuesday, November 11. With assistance from students and staff, the New Jersey Blood Center collected 53 pints of blood, which can help almost 150 people in local hospitals. And then, on November 12th, SGO sponsored our annual powder puff event. The sophomores and juniors met in the finals. The sophomores and juniors met in the finals. The juniors coming out with the victorious win the third year in a row. We will see if they come out for the fourth and win again.
Great, thank you so much. We always love learning, hearing what's going on at the high school.
Madam President, may I just add, Mia, I know you are one of our leaders at the high school, but didn't come to the elementary school, right? Yeah, but Gracelyn is a graduate from Livingston Park. So, maybe we ask, how do you feel about representing?
I feel great. A lot has changed.
Yes.
A lot has changed since I've been here.
But, Mr. Dawson, we have one of your alum from LP. Gracelyn just representing the student body in North Brunswick High School. So, thank you, Gracelyn, thank you, Mia.
Thank you very much for your report, girls. All right, we have our committee reports. Our committees met this month. We'll start with human resources. Dr. Patel.
Thank you, Madam President. The Human Resources Committee, Relations Committee, met on Tuesday, November 11 to discuss various personnel topics. For those on tonight's agenda who are retiring, the board thanks them for their service and wishes them well. We would like to express our gratitude to Parsons' Principal, Ms. Diana Whalen, who has announced her retirement effective at the end of the school year. We are appreciative of her almost 30 years of service at NBT schools. There are new staff and substitute hires on tonight's agenda. We welcome all of those new members to our district and we look forward to having you work with us here in North Brunswick. As of our committee meeting, any remaining vacancies for the 2025-2026 school year continue to be in the interview stages and will be posted until filled. All of our current openings can be found on our district website, social media pages, and posted in each of our buildings. For any teaching positions, alternate route and traditional route candidates are both encouraged to apply. We discuss any current and opening leaves of absences and how those positions may be filled via daily subs, long-term subs, or six teaching periods. Dr. Zakowski and Ms. Kita discussed that the district has received the Professional Certification Grant from the Educational Services Commission of New Jersey, which will include full tuition reimbursement for some of our teachers seeking additional certifications in areas of special education, math and sciences, bilingual ESL areas and bilingual ESL areas. The acceptance of this grant can be found on tonight's agenda. We also discussed another potential opportunity in continued partnership with the Educational Services Commission of New Jersey and Kane University regarding any of our professionals interested in seeking a teaching certificate. We look forward to hearing more about that in the coming months. Lastly, the committee toured a staff health center in a neighboring district to examine potential models for examining onsite health services for our employees, given our status as a self-insured school district. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Patel. At this time, we will jump to education. Stepping in for Mr. Ali is Vice President James.
Hello, good evening. The Education Committee met on Wednesday, November 12. And we had a short agenda reviewing some policies for both first and second reading. Policies for first reading were the inter-district public school choice, the library material, the resource materials, and the public complaints policies. And for second reading, we reviewed the promotion and retention policies. And that concludes our report.
Thank you. Mr. Carter, business operations?
Yes, the Business Operations Committee met on Wednesday, November 12. We received status updates on multiple projects related to the referendum and the timing of our upcoming audit report. On the agenda this evening, you'll find the following items. Finance item 3F to amend the purchase order. Finance item 3J related to pool rental contracts. And second readings of policies, 8601 located in Policy Section 1B related to student transportation and dismissal.
Thank you. Regarding New Jersey school boards and Middlesex County school boards, there are quick report for Mr. LaBoree, who is not here this evening. There is a county school boards meeting at the beginning of December. I believe it's December 3rd. My fellow board members and I also attended Workshop 2025 in Atlantic City for New Jersey school boards. We attended many networking events, courses. And it was a great opportunity to get our group together for some professional learning as well as team building and bonding. So, thank you for everyone that attended. I don't believe we have any other reports at this time. So, Mr. Wen, would you please take item number nine?
Yes, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion to approve administrative student committee reports.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Is anyone opposed? All the reports are accepted.
Thank you for talking. At this time, we will review our agenda for the evening. As stated at the beginning of the meeting, our team has received the agenda prior to tonight's meeting. We will go page by page. We've all seen this before. Any changes are in bold. So, we will start on page two and three. Pages four and- Pages 4 and 5. Some bolded items on page 5. Pages 6 and 7. 8 and 9. 10 and 11. Pages 12 and 13. And wrapping up on page 14. So at this time, we'll have a public session on agenda items only. If anyone from the audience would like to come up and address the Board, this is now the time to speak on agenda items only. We just ask that you state your name, and you'll be given 3 minutes. Seeing none, can we please have a motion to close the public portion of the meeting?
So moved. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Is anyone opposed? This session is closed.
Thank you. Ms. Keith, would you please take item 13, Consent Agenda?
Yes, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion to approve the following consent agenda items. Personnel, curriculum, miscellaneous, finance items 1 through 3, policy and transportation.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Wen. I will do a roll call. Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Ms. James?
Yes.
Ms. Keith?
Yes.
Dr. Patel?
Yes.
Ms. Touth?
Yes.
And Mr. Wen?
Yes.
All the motions and resolutions are accepted and approved.
Thank you. At this time, we will jump to page 13, item 14. We'll have a public session on any matter. At this time, I'll open it up to the public. If anyone from the audience would like to come and speak to the Board on any matter, we ask that you go up to the podium, state your name, and you'll be given 3 minutes. Seeing none, can I please have a motion to close this portion of the meeting?
So moved. Second.
I'm sorry, was that Ms. James?
Yes.
And Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Is anyone opposed? This session is closed.
Thank you. We will be striking out item 15 on the agenda. We will not be going into closed session this evening. So at this time, we'll also strike item 16 as we do not need to open our meeting again. So if there is nothing else, at this time, we will thank Mr. Dawson and his team again. Thank you so much for having us here this evening. Thank you all for being here. Students, thank you for staying out late tonight. And we ask that we will adjourn our meeting. So can we please have someone adjourned?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is anyone opposed? We are adjourned.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.